I couldn't do that. There'd be no Halo, there'd only be tech demos that were based on the Mac OS. There's a there's a very interesting story behind Halo because Bungie they managed to render light in real time which Pixar couldn't do which is why Apple wanted them and then eventually they ended up doing the deal with Microsoft 'cause Steve Jobs was really a massive what?
Mm. Yes.
Have you seen the movie about him?
Uh I've seen parts of it like off YouTube, I've not actually sat down and watched it.
It's a really good film.
Mm.
But uh if you just read into Steve Jobs' career, he's made many, many questionable decisions and many, many more failures than Apple like to admit. They tried bringing out a pen back in the eighties and it flopped. They tried ripping off yeah.
Really?
They also tried ripping off that uh P D A, the doomed P D A that ran Microsoft XP which failed anyway. I have one of those though.
Oh yeah. Do ya?
Yeah. It's it's in a plastic case on my on my shelf in my room because it took
It's a historical piece of history.
took me two years to get hold of because I bought it and then it was like back and forth emails. The guy tried saying he didn't have it.
Mm.
And I was like I just want it. Anyway, he eventually caved and I got it in the post a few weeks after. Two years.
Mm.
But I'm I wanna donate it to a museum.
Yeah.
I'm gonna need to wait long enough, museums will probably pay for that kind of shit.
I've altho- I've also got a few stamps from World War Two mainly unspoilt Nazi stamps that I'm gonna be giving away as well.
Ooh.
To like uh to like an appraiser or another stamp museum as a historical artefact. I have a few Churchill's but they're all spoilt so I'm gonna keep those.
Mm.
My uncle uncollected stamps and he uh basically passed them down to me and my brother. And they're these like four or five books and they stack about this high. So about ten thousand stamps. God, that sounds so boring.
Not really. I love the idea of collecting stuff. I w- I really wanna start like coin collection.
Ah I have at least one of every old uh tender that was available before we decimalised.
Mm. Well I got two shillings ring those actual rings. I got yeah, I got 'em for my birthday a couple of years ago. This one sorta wearing it don't know. That one's nineteen twenty seven and this one I think is nineteen forty seven.
Sh- made out of chilien? That's weird. You wanna be looking out for the nineteen twenty nine shillings because there is printing error on some of the Latin and they can end up being worth a lot. I think it's March two
Mm.
March to April printing. I had the money but they have the errors so they're quite rare and it costs quite a lot.
Mm. Oh really? That's cool, yeah. I don't know. It's so it's always depressing whenever you look on like eBay or whatever and it's like five million pound for a fifty p and it's like but
I've been looking for it. I I I lost a special fifty p. There was a a few a few sleeper coins they call them. They just released them in celebration things without telling people and it was a Lewis Carroll fifty p coin with like word art on the back of it of all of his books, you know Alice in Wonderland and stuff like that, the Jabberwocky.
Yeah. Mm. Yeah.
And I lost it and it was worth a lot.
Mm.
And I was like god damn it. But I guess it's just fifty p.
Yeah, you could always maybe find another if you're lucky enough.
I could always laser etch it though. But you wouldn't know. I feel like just applying some copper sulfate off the internet or potassium magnate and growing my own crystals using a coin as a seed. So just having the coin suspended in the crystal.
Mm.
It takes about four weeks to grow. I've got it before but I made the big mistake of not continuing metal varnish. So when it got water on it, it just decided to dissolve and crack.
Mm.
And it made no like uh fuck. Here's a question, you know a Herdwick sheep?
No.
Herdwick, they are the hardest sheep in the UK and they live only in the Lake District and they have naturally waterproof wool.
Oh. Really?
So coats made out of these sheep. They cost a lot of money but the coat for Sherlock was made out of Herdwick wool.
Mm. Some of it's grey. Oh.
Which is why it costs a lot, the official one. Costs something like a thousand two hundred pounds. I know.
Mm. I know like kilts are always very expensive aren't they 'cause they're made from a special type of wool and stuff.
Mm. Some some historical. It's also like tartan padding on them. Apparently it's only tartan when you have a clan. I only learnt that recently.
Mm. Yeah. You're not supposed to wear underwear under it either are you?
Yeah, I did. Um I hard I hard passed that, you know, I was at a wedding where I had to wear a kilt but I d- I fucking I wore thermals I did 'cause I just couldn't, you know.
Commander.
I can learn the bagpipes.
Yeah.
Um do you know any instruments, Harry?
I used to play the trumpet.
Oh. You still play it?
No.
Oh.
I I I know a D which is
What made you stop?
Uh 'cause I couldn't afford to buy an actual trumpet.
Do you think you'd remember how to play?
Maybe.
Would you either?
No, probably not. That was bottom of my down falls, like I couldn't read music. Don't know why.
Oh wow. Okay. She's played it eight years now.
But yeah. Like uh my sister had a piano, like just an electric piano and she she couldn't read music really either so she had to write the the notes on the piano.
The note. Note. But I've just been playing for eight years now so it's it comes naturally to me. I still find reading music difficult and I find sight reading even harder.
Mm. Mm.
'Cause you're 'cause you're looking at the music while you're trying to remember where your hands are and you end up playing in a completely different key by accident.
That's an issue I have like with P C gaming. I don't know where my fingers are to use multiple things.
Do you have a do you have a tower P C to game on? Do you do you game on your lap-
Laptop.
Game on your laptop? Do you use a mouse?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. What do you play?
Noth- I don't really play much. Uh it's mainly mainly just Minecraft.
Get Halo. Play some Halo with me. 'Cause really no one does.
Infinite.
Halo Infinite, it's free on Steam. The campaign comes separate. Comes out on the eighth. And I don't have money to buy it, great. But no, I'm already I'm already in the top two hundred in Onyx for that game.
Mm.
I've put fifty two hours into it and it only came out last week. Don't know what I'm doing with my life.
Oh um do you guys have Spotify?
I do not.
N- no. Why? What was your year of play or whatever it's called?
I just Uh yeah, the Spotify app.
Yeah, Spotify app, yeah.
Um 'cause I keep seeing like people posting and kinda the average is about like twenty thousand minutes in a year and me here just like a hundred thousand.
Divide that by sixty please.
F- why?
So I can get ninety hours.
For I was yeah.
Dividing by ten, ten thousand, ten hours, sixty.
What was it? What was it? How many hours?
Um hundred thousand uh three.
Approximately six hundred hours.
Mm.
Let's see if I bossed that mental arithmetic.
Yeah.
How many hours are in a year?
Four hundred thousand divided by Oh, I was ten thousand off uh. Okay, uh how many hours in a year?
Uh what, eight thousand seven hundred and six there.
Oh right, did you just work that out in your head?
No, I just Googled it.
Oh, I was about to do it in my head. My flat.
Uh oh. I was the the way that I remember it is l- uh remembering the Red lyrics seasons of love.
I've I've been trying to get better with it and I'll take that 'cause it's just an abortion honestly.
I'm 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 here like fucking integration. You're doing seconds for
Oh, it's huge by the way.
Thank you.
Neon, yeah. You know, it'd be cool if the neon part glowed.
I know, I've not tested that yet seriously. It might glow in the dark.
Like That'd be cool.
Or I could buy some like tubing and make my own like
That's not my idea because those souls you could you could uh fit a controller into the souls. I know someone who's done that with a pair of boots. They did a wrench cosplay from Watch Dogs Two.
Mm.
But they they did the whole movement dynamics on the boots and on the mask and they had it go up to their knees. It was sick 'cause every time they walked, every time they put the front of the foot down, it would like just push the pixels up. It was really cool.
Mm.
Right.
More than this is amazing. Uh one six six.
Very nice. Uh my mate
My top artist was taking this up there.
But my mate sent me his and his was uh his top artist was Sea Shanties apparently. Well that's fair.
What's your go-to music genre then?
Um
Synth wave, dark synth, lo-fi, um
Mm.
Unfortunately
I like classical too.
Unfortunately my highest fantasy is a dance pop because I like to embarrass myself in public.
I don't know. I like the really, really screechy violent synths. Because nothing else can drown out the tanzas. So I just make it was
Yeah. I really need um long I'm gonna get either like Google Home or the Alexa because I don't have
Yes, and and have Amazon listening to you all the time.
Oh. Something out of the world. Everything else is already listening to me.
Look look
Is that FBI agent on your phone?
Hmm like um
My FBI agent will probably hate me.
My uh my girlfriend and I always make jokes about Brady Kinks.
Same.
Oh my god.
And her Facebook ads are like she just keeps getting like really terrible fanfiction.
Yeah.
You really can't ban all its ins, can it?
And then all shit is fucking hilarious.
I just get random ads. I stay anonymous. Three V T Ns at any one time. I mean I have nothing to hide.
Yeah.
But I I hate the idea of having a pair of eyes on me. Like it makes my n- it makes my skin crawl, is how I put it.
Mm it's one of those things that I just kind of like casually forget about most of the time 'cause it's just too much effort to be worried about, you know?
Yeah. Did you know the Chinese mo- the Chinese phone manufacturers, all of them who sell phones there in the UK, are legally obligated by their state to take part in that elec- electronic spying and warfare initiative? So everybody who has a Huawei phone needs to buy it off.
Mm.
It's a it's a it's a funny one that 'cause I really like Huawei phones.
Mm.
Mm.
Because they're actually good phones. I just get one and just look at a bunch of random shit just to confuse the Chi- oh yeah, Tiananmen Square memes, let's go. Poking the panda. There was a news article the other day, China le- China's nuclear threat and then on the right it said poking the panda and it just made me laugh. Don't people just get a little angry?
It's cool.
I thought it would've been like glued to the back or something.
I did.
No, sometimes that's the here. People move it.
Gonna hit you over the head with this.
No, please sir.
No. Please, Sam, may I have some more? It's fucking dead in here. When did you think this place is open twenty four seven?
Probably very busy during exams.
No.
I wonder how strong the uh the roof of that little box is.
Well
For scientific reasons. I'm just wondering if anybody's ever tried to walk up before. You see, I don't like it doesn't work in the way everyone else does. He looks at a roof and thinks, oh yeah, I wanna walk on that. Yeah. I'm
Anyone who's ever looked at a roof like that.
Yeah.
Like like you know when you're in town centres and all of the buildings are really close together and you're just like ooh.
Could I parkour across that?
Could I?
I could not parkour across that. I would fall and die but I still want to.
Ooh, wh- when we were at Mum and Dad's wedding anniversary, this dog this dog stole toast right out of my hand. And it looked at me and taunted me about it.
Uh my my roommate's dog uh Milo the first night I was there stole bacon straight off my plate.
What did you guys know about the crystal cane in Mexico? Giant crystal cane a few miles along.
I know about it, what if something happened? Yeah, it's so cool. You're not loading it anymore, are you though?
It's a problem. Yeah, because the structural integrity of it has been ruined by humans.
'Cause of the op- yeah.
That's true.
Se- uh I'm I'm trying to think of what it is. I think it's selenite. Yeah, you can see that crystal's fallen off the wall.
Gosh darn humans, I hate them.
Why couldn't they just use X-ray imaging?
X-ray.
Oh L E D, you know, you could say secure device. Been being taught how to use the transmission electron microscope.
Mm-hmm. Ooh, cool.
I was just speaking to Jasmine on the day we were doing the imaging.
Yeah.
And she was like, well I can I can show you how to use it.
It's opening it's not this week is it? It's next well, not the next week, it's the week after into
It's a little while, yeah. But she she said like yeah, once I log onto YouTube and everything, she's gonna show me how to use it. Can't wait, can't wait. It's gonna be so cool.
I'm so excited. Kind of. Are you gonna go like when they're doing the opening ceremony thing?
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Oh I just I I've I've basically got two weeks, three weeks of a fucking holiday now.
Mm.
Because revision is easy for me and I'm just so glad I got the assignments handed in. I had it done for two weeks. I was just editing and then deleting entire sections and then edit. You're going to fucking hate me Ellie, but I took the absolute piss with I I stretched the guidelines to their limits, okay?
Saying.
That's how my mum got through it here. That's how I'm gonna get through it here. She came here to do teaching in modern farming.
Mm, I remember you saying.
Yeah. If I ever repeat myself, please yell at me.
Hi.
I have a terrible memory. You know, I think I'm gonna have a terrible memory because of the way I hit my head.
No.
Yeah.
I mean my flex with amnesia.
I mean, there's also this. But yeah. I had a temporary episode of amnesia after I hit my head in Canada. I didn't remember who anyone was. They have a specific name for it, when you can remember speech and movement.
Mm. Yeah.
But you don't remember people. But it lasted for about a day.
That that was terrifying.
It fucking was. But then like looking back on it now, to me it doesn't seem as terrifying as it was.
Mm.
Because I know who those people are.
Yeah.
And it was fucking weird like but yeah, look look at this. Naught point nine eight space size twelve font by the way.
Whoa.
Two pages of it. Just just a word.
Yeah.
You know, the results. And then I got five references.
Mm, cool.
Mm.
I I'm probably gonna get yelled at by Faye but I didn't do anything wrong.
I don't it. I mean it fits.
It don't
Technically I was like a couple lines over but I had the picture and so you can't really tell.
Yeah, you can't judge. Plus the figure doesn't count.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's why I put the picture after everything.
Yeah.
Just so I knew what I was doing. Anyway, I just saw I just thought fuck it, I'm done. I'm handing it in. Bye bye.
Yeah, I'm so glad that's done now.
Oh, I'm so fucking caught.
But um I think for the um group project you've gotta like pull me up on it and make sure I'm helping out 'cause otherwise I don't
We have no idea what we're doing 'cause we have Jasmine now instead of C P and
Yeah.
Thank god I love Jasmine.
whatever that is. I know Jasmine's so nice. So I think what she's gonna do
I'm jealous that you've got Jasmine.
I know. She's gonna try and come up with her own ideas for project proposals and put 'em to us and we can pick.
Yeah.
So I've I've built quite a good rapport with Jasmine and Lorena because I b- I basically got an email thing going where I send a question and they'll give me support.
Mm. Cool.
I asked Faye but she said unless you've got allowance for one-to-one support, you can't ask for help from me. And I was like fuck. She said I needed a uh a student support package.
Yeah.
And I looked into it but for that I need a you know specifically I need a diagnosis and I don't want a diagnosis for anything.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mm. I think for
Shit yourself.
I mean I mean sometimes sometimes like these ones are really fucking difficult, yeah, where they've got like the the question marks 'cause I have no idea what's next.
Maybe you could ask Jasmine if she 'cause she's your tutor, if she could speak to like learning people.
Yeah. I just don't wanna you know cause any tensions or get on anyone's bad list or anything like that. I'm trying to be as amicable as possible because I'm thinking about stuff down the road and doing research here.
Yeah. Mm. Mm.
Because they subsidise it heavily for V H Ds.
Mm.
Which would be interesting. But that means I'd probably be told what to do instead of doing something I want to do.
Yeah. Do you think you're gonna do it here then? Like your masters and PhD?
Oh. Maybe, maybe.
I'm not sure. It's just annoying 'cause the only masters they do for biology is the masters by research and I don't know whether I wanna do just a masters in research or
I think they I think they do a biotech masters.
Do they? I don't see it. I don't know if they do that. The only ones I've seen are like conservation management and research and it's like
I think so.
Um Yeah.
If I can do my own vocational masters, I'll go spend Canada, go to Canada for a year.
Mm.
The conservation management were like that group was with me um with the the field botting actually and
Mm. Mm. We have said to Jasmine as well, anything with plants that you can think of.
But they actually
Anything with plants.
Yeah. Like
It just reminded me of that C P N U plant.
It's funny 'cause before last year with the field botting, I had absolutely fucking like no idea what I wanted to do and then field botting came along. I was like wow, plants are pretty cool.
Oh, I wanna push the panel up. Just to go, just continue the conversation.
I think you might get sued by the uni if you did push a panel up.
I'm just doing
I know if you pushed it like that.
Ah yes, they're going to steal even more of my money. Ow. Okay. No, but I've I'm 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 barely self-funding this.
Mm.
Skin of my teeth stuff, which is why I decided not to come to Halls this year.
Yeah.
'Cause that would just cost too much.
I mean you you got the loan from student finance for tuition, right?
No.
No?
I worked my ass off. I busted my ass over summer.
Fuck.
Cleaning people's cars, dirt people's gardens.
How did you wear that much just over summer?
Right?
I was out every day, every Saturday and Sunday, every Monday to Friday. I also have other jobs repairing building P C's for example. That costs a lot of money like
Although Yeah.
Oh yeah, yeah, I remember you saying that.
Like like fifteen to sixteen P C's built and you're set basically for a year but you d- usually don't get that many people uh because people know about you by word of mouth. I don't really advertise.
Yeah.
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 'Cause it's a pain in the ass when you're like too many people.
To be fair, I did three months of work, working like three or four days a week and I was able to save up three thousand and I easily spent like five thousand so
Yeah. Yeah, I am an impulsive spender so I have been really good with my money this year. I've I've managed to save about one thousand six hundred from the teaching job from between September
Like
Mm.
when the school's term started and now.
Mm.
And I'm just saving for next year now. I really am. Because I'm gonna see if I can get a place here and then get a part-time job in Ormskirk for two days a week. Because that's all well
Mm.
Yeah, I I mean
me will allow me to manage.
I don't have like as I would absolutely love to get a part-time job but not only the ones in Ormskirk like extremely um competitive, especially if you want something other than fucking Macs.
I'll just give them my six-page long C V. It's alright.
Yeah.
What's the P C? That's my own P C.
Oh, that's so nice.
I can help you build one in the future if you ever get around to it. But like what colour scheme would you think of going?
I would love to build one, yeah. I like green. I like the colour scheme. Green up well, I really like yellow and purple but it's a bit
You like green? Yellow and purple work. You'd you'd want white parts to accentuate the colour. Would you want something like that? 'Cause that to the so that that that's the RAM.
Yeah. Mm. Yeah.
That is the power cable from the power supply unit.
Yeah.
And it's it's a clip-on cable cone that goes over the top and behind the motherboard tray and it's programmable as well. L E Ds and fans. It looks fancy but it does have high and harder in it, that's cool.
Yeah. Would you ever do a water P C? Would you ever do a water one?
Pardon? Would is it hardline tubing? You want hardline tubing?
Yeah.
Do you know what? Because it's you, yeah.
Sure. I know you and you won't mess me around if anything goes wrong. But I've done hardline tubing in the past and it's a pain in the ass. I've done copper hardline tubing.
Yeah.
I've had to do all the bends myself, all the seals, all the leak testing. There was a point where the customer tried doing it themselves because it was taking me too long and they spilt water all over their R T X twenty eighty and that cost them about two thousand one hundred pounds and they tried judging me for that and I was like fuck you, that's your own fault.
Oh, yeah.
Go to your card manufacturer, they'll give you another one for free if you say it was accident. Because once you dried all the water off, they can't tell if it was water damage.
Yeah.
Water damage not covered by the warranty. But yeah, no, that that graphics card is a single fan graphics card and it's been carrying me for a long time now.
Like yeah, I remember you saying
I managed to get hold of the C P U ahead of the scalpers and it's one of the ones from this year as well. So this thing is beefy. I can play Red Dead Redemption Two on Mac settings. Which is nice. Except from when there's a large area to render. But I use something called deep learning super sampling, which Nvidia released. It bounds it so so it renders the game at something like four eighty P.
Mm.
But then it A I up scales it to something like ten eighty or twenty one forty and it has no performance impact and it uses the tensor cores, the A I cores in the graphics card. Because this graphics card is powered by A I.
Mm. Oh yeah. Yeah.
And it's definitely cool. Sorry, I'm nerding out.
Cool. It's cool. I wish I knew all stuff like that.
What? Linus Tech Tips? The University of Linus Tech Tips, that is where I learned everything. He has like a O one O one series on you know computing basically, other building computers but from the base up.
Mm.
When I say base, I mean base code. So operating language, zeros and ones.
Mm.
It's it's good fun. Well, depends what you think fun is. But I enjoy it. What do you think of Space Wizards using shotguns?
Mm I don't know.
Does that sound up your alley? Because Destiny, Destiny, that's if you like, okay. Destiny Two I play.
Yeah, actually. Yeah. Destiny Two's on Steam too.
I pre-ordered the Witch Queen D L C but I also pre-ordered the thirtieth anniversary edition and the extra seasons to come and now I'm ninety pounds out of pocket. Because oh wow, promotional item, you get a ghost shell that is a pentagon. And I was just like I felt awful after the purchase but you can't return D L C purchase.
No.
That's eighty seven eighty seven ninety pounds I could've spent on croak missures and toasties. If if you ever like Destiny's good fun, it's a bit grindy.
I've been meaning to actually download it.
I'm not gonna lie to you, it's very grindy. You 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 get through the light levels really easily but then once you get to you have pinnacles.
Mm.
And then you have powerful gear tier one, tier two, tier three. You have to get all your gear to a pinnacle standard to get to the hard cap of power. There's soft cap which is something like twelve seventy, then there's hard cap which is thirteen twenty.
Mm.
Hard cap that increases if you have powerful gear. So all of your gear needs to be powerful, et cetera, et cetera. You get primes, you get umbrellas, you st-
Yeah.
Oh, I don't I'm a right nerd but I've got about two thousand hours into that game. And I am level four hundred and ninety on the battle pass. Because this season was incredibly long and there has been nothing to do. But on December eighth, they're releasing the dungeon that you get for pre-ordering the Witch Queen.
Mm.
And that has an exotic rocket launcher in it called Galavant and I can't wait to get that. But it's a six-player dungeon instead of a three-player dungeon so it's really weird. Ooh, there is the three-metre tall box lock.
Whoa, that's not what I expected.
Yes. It's freestanding as well. It's because they're
Yeah. How does it cope in the wind?
Just fine. It's very s- it's like it just stays there.
Mm.
Doesn't get blown over. Not like the flowers. Flowers don't cope, pollen though, rain. So we we keep them bunched up with uh basically the stuff we put on strimmers.
Oh yeah, the yeah.
We wrap that around. Yeah, you know what? You know exactly what I mean, the plastic garbage can.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like when I was at my fucking packing job, the amount of fucking people ordering strimmer line made me wanna die.
Groin stuff.
Oh, that's nice. That's very pretty sad. Yeah.
It's mostly lilies in that one. I love lilies. It's a shame you have to keep deadheading them though because they even if they're not dead lilies, they only last like four or five days before they start going brown.
Mm. I didn't know.
I want genetically modified lilies that last forever. Ooh, there is something else I didn't need to splash out on but I did anyway.
Oh.
It's a Quest Two. There was an unexpected cost with the Quest Two which was, you see that cable there?
Yes. Yeah.
That's a fibre optic ten gigabit per second cable. That I realised shit, I'm going to need that because I can't run it on coax because the coax cable I tried using basically melted.
Yeah. Ooh.
But it's good because the motherboard has a high throughput U S B C on the back of it and it's not transferring video data to the graphics card, it's transferring it from the graphics card up the P C I E lanes and out the back of the motherboard. So I basically have to take every U S B thing out of the P C that I don't need every U S B thing out of the P C that I don't need in it for the maximum amount of throughput.
Are you gonna play the uh remake of Rezzy Four on it?
Yes.
Yes.
I have also played Bone Works, I have also played Half Life Galax, I have also played Super High, I've also played Space Pirate Trainer, which is my favourite. Try and beat my Halls. I scored sixty seven thousand four hundred and eighty.
Oh.
I'm a sweat, okay. Beat Saber Swan.
Oh, I love Beat. Is it sad that sometimes I put Beat Saber on YouTube on the telly and just do it and pretend that I'm doing it?
No.
I did that before I got a re- headset.
Yes.
But genuinely, I
It's such a good see that if there was a sport that would do, it would just be Beat Saber. There you go.
It is satisfying just watching the lightsabers go straight through the box. But I'm used to that.
Yes.
Half Life Alex is one of my favourites.
Yeah, it's such a good game.
Uh you gotta be using V R like constantly, otherwise you'll lose your legs and you'll end up getting seasick.
Mm.
Basically it's it's a horrendous effect 'cause like you'll you'll be playing for like two or three hours and then you'll start feeling sick and then you'll take the headset off. And then you just sit down and you'll feel even worse. That lasts like two or three days. Like games like Bone Works are incredible but because you've got a body in the game it kind of you know when you take the headset off
You're still yeah.
Yeah, you're still in that other body. Like I I
Oh, that sounds like a like that that sounds like it made me dissociate so bad.
Like literally literally the other day I pulled I pulled the drawer, right? I I pu I pulled up in the cupboard and I just put my hand up like that expecting to grab a glass from the cupboard
Yeah.
like with the force.
Yeah.
I just don't fuck with doing here. God. But it's a fun game. It is a very fun game. I've had many, many fun moments in it. I recently uninstalled it to make space for Halo
Mm.
which is i uh the right now it's at a manageable size. It's twenty six gigabytes but it's gonna get bigger. It's gonna get bigger. It's it's a game of seasons in it.
That's so encouraging. In the D S leagues, yeah.
The progression in that game's fucking awful. It's the most aggressive form of battle pass progression I have ever seen in any game. My problem isn't that you have to pay for the battle pass which they promised would be free, mind you, which it isn't. My problem is that when you so so you buy an armour coating, you can't just choose your colour inhaler anymore. You buy an armour coating.
Mm.
But then the armour coating's only for the armour. You have to buy a coating for a gun, then you have to buy a coating for another gun and then another vehicle. You don't just get to use one across all. You have to buy
Oh, yeah. You have to buy it separate for each.
Can you imagine how aggressive that is? Paying like seven ninety nine a time for a fucking coating for a fucking piss piss ball? What?
Yeah.
I it it's not it's not three four three that made the decision, it's Microsoft and three four three uh on their asses fixing it now. Because Microsoft lost the game about fifty thousand players in the first day because of the way it progresses. Like also you can't progress through the battle pass just for playing the game. You have to complete challenges.
Mm.
As if you have to. And since you can't choose what game mode you play, since it's random in a playlist you might not even get the conditions to complete a challenge in the first place. But the gameplay is stellar. It is the strongest Halo game ever. And I have had too much fun in it. But hopefully I get invited to some events since since I'm in top two hundred. I'll either get invited to solo solos or duos with a random and from there I can really progress or I can watch pros.
Yeah.
Which is gonna be a lot of fun. And so just let at that game.
Mm.
The mic off. You know, just just staring for like five or six hours and then I realise it's six o'clock and I have to drive to uni and I'm like fuck. So usually what I do is I park up and I just have a like an hour's nap in the car. Because regulation is hard. Jay feels that, don't you, Jay?
Yeah, fuck it. Like I I wrote a different ten years of story for self discipline and my brain was like done up that bitch. Like I'm like I didn't wanna start everything and go to the gym. And my brain's like, I think not.
I did a similar thing but with Kendo and I just dropped that as soon as I stopped going to the club.
Yeah.
I don't even have my bucket anymore.
So I kinda wanna um maybe
I was good at it. I had a small bucket and a big bucket. 'Cause you're encouraged to develop your own fighting style.
Mm.
Well, not your own fighting style but you're in colour you're encouraged to use different weapons.
Yeah. I kinda wanna um get you know the practice rooms that they have in the art centre? But one that's like um
We're different. You shit your pants, I shit my shirt.
Yeah, um one that's like for dance so that I can practise my uh catters from karate. 'Cause I just kind of miss
Oh, it is.
being able to lift them up. I think the the basic ones I could still do relatively easily but like there's this one advanced scatter that's like fifty two moves long. Takes like three hard minutes of like of
This sounds like so much effort. I'm like just give me
Yeah, like memorising that shit was fucking
Nnn. You're wearing a fucking sock. Do you wanna see this one?
No, do I want to see this one?
It's beans in a sock.
It's like it has the same energy as
Yeah. Mm.
It's worse than you thought in it.
Taster.
That fucking Twitter post where they put
It was a why pick a white sock as well? You're never gonna get them stained out.
It's uh it's rate it's operated by plate. Ooh, these Chantarelles by the way, I found out what they were.
Oh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chantarelle mushrooms.
Oh.
Lovin'. It tastes like chicken. Uh something that makes me think we're in a simulation. Why does everything taste like chicken?
Yeah. Why not? Like every meat is just like I am either chicken or
Except beef.
Yeah, lamb lamb kinda tastes like beef a lot. Time I can do
You know what? I haven't had a steak in seven years. I'm go I actually haven't had red meat in four years now.
Oh. I hope to God, I hope to God my mom does that like rack of lamb for Christmas because it's fucking delicious.
Are you are you a vegan or are you a vegan?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's sometimes
My whole my whole family isn't though, so it's just like so I'm like not really used to it.
Yeah.
Sometimes eat chicken.
Mm.
No, I don't eat it a lot.
Yeah, like
I am actually fussed about where it comes from though.
Mm.
Yeah, for for conservation and like um animal well-being and all of those so sorts of reasons, I can see why but like
Yeah.
also as I've mentioned, I have myself discipline and I would just be like yeah, but like I want
Something most people don't know about uh something most people don't know about free-range chickens is that when they say free-range, they actually need
Not wince me. Yeah, it only means um square metre by metre.
Yeah.
The i me uh two square feet.
Square per yeah.
Yeah, they usually just kept in like a huge
So it's still really confined for the chickens but there's just not as many chick they use the same spaces, just not as many chickens in there.
Yeah.
That's volume. Which is shit if you ask me.
Yeah.
Then unfair to eat animal.
Yeah, or to like keep chickens fully full range would be like
Mm.
the the easiest way to do it would be to like raise your own chickens and you back garden because
Mm.
Question, Ellie.
Yeah?
I was vegan for two of those years that I've been you know four years off red meat. What did you use as an egg substitute?
I just don't have
No, as in like for cooking?
Um I don't have anything
Okay.
we're carrying eggs. I've never we've never tried to like cook another game. Yeah.
Because I I didn't I did a lot. I know a lot of baking. That's all. I used to use flax.
Bananas. Bananas.
Yeah, bananas worked sometimes. I used to use flax a lot.
Yeah, flax seeds are good.
I actually like making banana chips in the oven. Cutting bananas, drying them out with a bit of salt and then throwing them in the oven. They ended up nice and crunchy.
Mm. Mm.
The sad thing is, the sad thing about being a vegan was I wasn't able to enjoy raw fruit or veg because of oral allergy syndrome.
Mm.
Man's really forgotten what an apple tastes like. Apparently I'm not missing out though.
No, apples are fucking boring. Of of all of the fridge you can make and people are like oh I want fucking apples, get off.
Apple is what caused us to be kicked out of the garden of Eden, so. Thank Crowley for that.
I fucking love good almonds. I didn't know that the demon at the end was Benedict Cumberbatch.
Yeah, the devil.
I didn't yeah, I I di I didn't know.
No.
I was like who the hell's this? And then I looked at the credits and I was like, wait, what? Did not sound anything like him. I liked him as smog.
Mm.
He was called as smog. Hmm. Apologies, my friend. It's just that as an I N T J, these illogical actions of yours, I find you to be amusing. What's that? Every sample of your shovels new crispy potato stacks. Not necessary, I've already calculated its flavour in my head. Mm-hmm, perhaps a little more. This is something a real person has said. Reddit is more like painful. The internet in general.